The February 10th, 2021 special Wasilla City Council meeting is called to order. The time is 6:00 PM. Before we begin, council, please put away cell phones. If you have personal business to attend to during the meeting, please move for recess. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Rousa?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Viallak?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
We do have a quorum, Madam Mayor, with councilmembers Rousa, Johnson, and Brown participating in person. We have councilmembers Viallak and Harvey on the phone. Councilmember Bernie is absent and excused on personal leave unless there's objection from the body.
Okay. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Brown, would you please lead us?
Yes, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes? Hearing none, the agenda will stand as presented. We are on to public participation and seeing no one in the audience. So now we are to new business. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Our new business item is discussion on Clerk Council and Records Management budgets for fiscal year 2022 in a committee of the whole.
Okay. Is there a motion to enter into a committee of the whole?
So moved by Tim Johnson.
Seconded by Councilman Brown.
It's been moved by Councilmember Johnson and seconded by Councilmember Brown to enter into Committee of the Whole. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, we are in the Committee of the Whole. So tonight, if you will turn to, in your packet, page four of nine. And we will start, this is for the Clerk's office. And what I'm going to do is each line, we will just move on if there is no questions. Okay?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have seven pages in my packet.
You're on the electronic version?
Yes.
She's using her paper.
I'm sorry, I'm using paper.
So which page are we on?
We are on the City of Wasilla Budget Detail for Fiscal Year 2022. And it says General Fund, General Government, and Clerk's Office.
And that should be page four?
That's two.
Page two is seven. Okay. Thank you. Okay. The first line, this is for Personnel Services, and it's line 1010. Okay. 1099.
Can we go back to line 1020? I got a quick question here. It's showing a decrease of 4,200 for temporary, and I'm just curious as to why we're anticipating a temporary reduction.
Through the chair, this is Jamie Newman, Clerk. Through the chair to Councilmember Johnson. We had added more election officials because of the runoff election, and those are paid out of temp salaries.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any, any other questions on Personnel Services? Okay. Hearing none, then we'll go on to Personnel Services and Benefits. So it's line 2010. 2030. 2040. 2050. 2060. 2099. Personnel Services and Benefits. Any questions?
Yes. Again, I'm going to ask the same question as to why we expect a decrease in workers' compensation costs in 2022.
Mr. Tankersley.
It's actually not a decrease, and it's reflected as a decrease because it's comparing the amended budget. However, the premiums is estimated right now. It's just a slight adjustment. More than anything, it's not an increase. And Mayor, I don't know if you want me to, we've got three new council members. When we talk about personnel figures in a generalization kind of format, if I can, to talk about the calculations, not just in this budget, but you're going to obviously see them when we get into budget meetings with council as a general rule. I don't know if you want me to go?
Absolutely.
So when we talk about personnel calculations, the, obviously, we have three unions, and we have the non-reps. The unionized contracts are, the rates specified are specified within those contracts. So for example, CPI in all three of those contracts is set at a minimum of 2%. It can be higher than 2%, but if it's below 2%, it's going to be 2%, right? So that's different than the non-reps. The non-reps are based on a three-year average CPI, which right now is less than 1%. So to keep all employees equal, okay, it doesn't seem logical to me, anyway, that you would treat the non-reps any different than what the CBAs are dictating. So we have a 2% minimum CPI. Then the scales, depending on where you are in the scale, can range between a 2.25 step increase to a 2.5% step increase. So for the high end, you're looking at a 4.5% increase from wage from FY '21 actual to what we now estimate to be FY '22. So that's important because when we look at the FY '21 wage numbers and compare them to the FY '22 proposed budget, one might think that it's an automatic 4.5%, but it's not always the case mathematically because we are using actual numbers in '20 to derive our FY '21 numbers. Well, now we're deriving actual '21 numbers to generate the '22 numbers. And I say that because oftentimes when we get into these budget hearings, sometimes people get confused because they are expecting to see an automatic 4.5% increase mathematically. The other thing that happens in these contracts when we talk about health insurance. Health insurance is through, primarily, the bulk of it is through the Local 302 Trust. Local 302 members, 17 of them, 18 of them, excuse me, have, through the CBA. And Local 302 has agreed through an associates agreement to take on the non-reps and the police department through an associates agreement and to Local 302 Healthcare. 341 has its own healthcare, but all the CBA trust agreements say in them that the maximum amount that healthcare premiums can increase is 8%, right? And so there's other things within the healthcare, like life insurance that we pay for and stuff like that. So the percentage increases, obviously, aren't going to always be 8%. So it's another common thread that you'll see. But when we budget for healthcare, we budget at the max of 8% because we know that's the max that the trust can charge the city. If it goes over 8%, then the employees contribute, which is an incentive to the CBA and those unions to keep those premiums tight and keep them under the 8% mark because they don't want their members to contribute. And while I'm talking, if I might, Mayor?
Yes.
One more common thread that you'll see here is under the insurance line, it's actually 50, I don't have my glasses on, that might help.
5020.
50, 5020, thank you. So you're going to see large increases this year across the board. You might remember here recently I had to do an appropriating ordinance to refund our insurance, even though through the budget cycle, what we estimated, what we thought might be on target actually was shy. And so we had to do an appropriating ordinance to align that up. This year, I hope to be a little bit closer, although it's always early right now when you're looking in the crystal ball for what workman's comp rates are going to be and what the general liability rates are going to be, as well as property. Property and general liability is what's hurting everyone across the state, whether you're part of the pool of APEI, which we are under a three-year agreement, or if you're with AML, JIA. We're all kind of getting hit with these large increases with, as you know, schools burning down and the police departments having these, some of these lawsuits that they're having, and that's going across the country. So anyway.
Mr. Tankersley, I don't mean to interrupt, but when you use acronyms, I have no idea what you're talking about because this isn't my strong suit.
I apologize for the acronym.
Well, there's a few in the beginning, I wish I could remember them. And then several in the middle and then some toward the end, so.
Please stop me if I'm using an acronym that you don't understand.
Or if you could just, like, supplement it with the, what it is, I'd appreciate that, just for my own knowledge. I don't know if I'm embarrassing myself right now or not, but it's just.
AML, JIA.
API.
Well, AP, excuse me.
Or API.
And the CIP.
Yeah, CIP. CIP, I don't think I use CIP. But anyway, Alaska.
CPI, Troy.
AML, Alaska Municipal League. JIA is Joint Insurance Association. There, and then I used Alaska Public Entity Insurance. The State of Alaska has two pools of insurance carriers, if you will, four municipalities and school districts. And it's those two pools, one of them APEI, Alaska Public Entity Insurance, is the one we belong to.
CPI.
CPI is Consumer Price Index. That's an Anchorage-based Department of Labor, if you will, that is a calculation that we use. It's three-year average of Anchorage CPI, Consumer Price Index, to develop what the growth rate is going to be for wages. And then the second piece that I was talking about was step movements and things like that. It's based on wage scale that council adopts through resolution each year.
And then acronyms for the unions. I don't even know.
Local 302.
All those three, we had three WPTA.
Anyway, WPTA is obviously Wasilla Police Department Association. That's where we developed and applied them.
I'll let him come join the military where he can really get into.
Yeah, please stop me if I ever use an acronym that you don't understand, please stop me, and that goes within the budget documents as well. I try to get departments not to use acronyms, and if we decide to use an acronym, to make sure it's defined not only somewhere in the budget, but at the end of the budget when we define all acronyms.
Thank you.
I think that's it, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. We are to number 30, 32.
Madam Mayor, I'm assuming the legal, this is Councilman Brown, I'm assuming the legal is the contract for the attorneys?
Yes, sir. Through the chair to Councilmember Brown, that is, that's with, I have actually, if you turn over to the next page where you see the 3032 under legal.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, yes, yes, okay.
So out of the budget for general legal services, which is under our contract with Holly's firm, Bert Horton-Bittner, that's the 6975. I also have 6,000 allocated in case I ever had to go to outside legal counsel. I probably wouldn't with this firm because their bench is so deep, they have experts on so many subjects. But in past prior years, maybe a municipal attorney that the city hired didn't have that many attorneys at the firm, so I think that's where that extra came from in case we needed an expert.
Thank you.
So that would be specific to Clerk's Office. I use that this year. A lot of questions surrounding the election were charged to that account. It's primarily it.
Okay. Okay, that's professional services. And moving on to number 40, 30. This is purchased property. 5020.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Brown again.
Yes, sir.
And I guess to the financial chair through the mayor, I'm assuming this is the health insurance, like a workman's comp?
Specifically to this budget, it's only general liability.
Okay.
And general liability is a calculation based upon the payroll.
That was other purchased services. And then category 6010. That's supplies.
Mayor, if I might?
Yes.
Give a generalization on this one here. 9917 Technology Replacement is transferred from the General Fund, in this case from this department, to the Technology Replacement Fund for the replacement cycles of computers. We charge, in this case, they have three computers, $300 each, which is why you get the 900.
Okay. You have division total. Is there any questions on any of this? You have a summary of expenditures with division total? And summary of resources? Is there any questions on any of this budget? Hearing none, we are going to Records Management, page six of nine on, in the paper. So account 3032. That's for your professional services. 4031 is purchased property, which is computer software maintenance. That is other purchased services. And account 60, so it's 6010. 6015. That would be supplies. 9917 is technology replacement. You have a summary of expenditures and a summary of resources. Is there any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Viallak.
I know that last year there was a lot of discussion on technology replacement, that it might be good if Troy touches on that for the new council members, on how that comes about and, you know, on a cycle and all that.
Through the mayor, to Councilmember Viallak, absolutely. So as I was stating earlier, these are transfers from the General Fund and the various departments to the Technology Replacement Fund. The basic computer, we typically charge $300 per computer that the department might have. The cycle can range, it's typically on a five-year cycle. Sometimes it's a seven-year cycle, depending on need or use, I should say, there's more power users than others, so. In any case, the whole point is that these transfers that are occurring from the General Fund are flat, as opposed to if the departments themselves acquired these computers on their own cycles, then you're going to see spikes. One year they buy three and then they don't buy any, and five years later they buy three more or four more and whatnot. So what this is intended to do is keep a flat budgeted line item, but then IT buys however many computers across the city to replace those on an ongoing basis. Did that answer your question, Councilmember Viallak?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, this is Councilman Johnson. I guess you're going to really find my ignorance here, but I just want to make sure that, or maybe you could explain to me, the records management within the city, is this dealing with, like, property, or what kind of records are we dealing with?
Through the chair to Councilmember Johnson, records, paper records. So it's the city's overall, we have retention schedules, so depending on, and we have classification plans, so just as an example, I'll use finance as an easy one, invoices, we retain them active plus three years. So after three years, they go into our records center, we store them, there's processes in here. If you turn to the detail sheets, you'll see processes for microfilm. That sounds archaic, but permanent records are still, that's the recognized medium to keep them. So those are microfilmed, we have to send out a company for that, and then copies are sent down to Juno State Archives in case the whole building burned and for some reason. So many now, we do have backed up electronically too, but from a records management perspective, they still recommend the microphone today. Anyway, that's that, Mr. Johnson.
Is there any further questions?
Madam Mayor? So this is like a 30,000-foot question. I should probably know this already. Is this for a particular department? I just, you know, like, the headings is for general government? This isn't like all-encompassing, this isn't, this is for narrowly focused on what part of our city government?
Is this everything but WPD? They have their own records management system, RMS system.
I mean, not just the record management bit, but this whole discussion?
Oh.
30,000 foot, right? So just trying to figure out where I'm at. I'm tracking with you on most of this, but I'm just, just wanted to ask that question, so I'm.
Court.
To help describe this a little bit better, so when you're looking right now, obviously, we are looking at the three individual divisions of Clerk's Office, Records Management, and Council. We're not looking at Finance or MIS or anybody else right now. And when you, not just here, but when we go down the path into more budget discussion with the rest of the city departments, you're always going to see this header that says the fund, in this case, it's the General Fund, and what department, i.e. the general government, as opposed to public safety, as opposed to Parks and Rec, as opposed to Public Works. So, and then the division, obviously, in this case, I'm referencing the Clerk's Office or Records Management. So it's kind of this high level of general government that gets brought down into the Clerk's Office, but it's funded through the General Fund.
Thanks. That's exactly what I was asking. I need a nice scatter chart or something. Okay, thanks.
Okay. We are moving on to page eight of nine in your paper packet. And this is the council budget. We'll start with account 10. So 1010 is Personnel Services. That's your Personnel Services benefit. Account 3031. Your Professional Services. Account 4031. 4040 is purchased property. Account 5020.
Got a question on the rentals. What is it that we are renting at the current time?
Through the chair to Councilmember Johnson. That's the council's portion of our copier rental.
Got it.
For the council, it might help, on the pages that follow each of the main pages is the breakdown of the charges. So if you look at the 4040s rentals, off to that you'll see copier rental. I'm happy to answer the questions, though, but.
I might piggyback on that one, too, because that's going to be a general question as well across all departments, is the city has a contract with Valley Business Machines with virtually all the copiers in the city, and we're, it's based on a pooled copy count of black and white versus color, and that gets distributed, allocated, whatnot, each fiscal year.
Pardon me for being daft. I now understand your account numbers with the last digits matching. Anyway, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to account 50, so it's 5020. 5030. 5082.
Madam Mayor, can I add something?
Yes.
Just for the education of the council on travel. So I don't know if you remember, but Councilmember Viallak was elected to the AML Board, so she now represents a seat, is it broke by South Central, I think? Councilmember Viallak, is it a seat you represent for the Matsui Valley?
Yeah.
Yeah, for Wasilla.
For Wasilla. At any rate, so if you look on here, we traditionally, and it's been a council decision, the AML has, of course, in addition to the Fall Conference that you all missed this year because it was virtual, or some of you weren't appointed at then, they typically have a winter legislative conference in June or in February, and then a summer conference in August, and the summer conference goes to different locations throughout the state. We've always funded for four council members to attend, and it's actually always worked out perfectly because for whatever reasons, two usually, it's either work commitments or whatever, two usually can't go. Councilmember Viallak, because. Councilmember Vlach, because she is on the AML Board, historically, is now going to automatically get one of those slots. So, that'll mean three, it only leaves three trips now for the rest of the council. We've never had a formal way, you know, if I all of a sudden have six people that want to go, or, excuse me, that would be five others that want to go. We can look at the budget then. We can maybe transfer some money around. But usually, it all flushes out. So, for budgeting purposes, we budget four trips for those. Now, to the main AML conference in the fall, we do for all six of you. Four for the newly elected, and then we allow them to stay the entire week because typically, we have two new members in the fall, and then the remaining members stay the entire week for conference. So, I don't know if I'm making any sense, but just something I wanted to point out.
Thank you. Account number fifty, eighty-two. Fifty, eighty-five. Those are other purchased services. Account number sixty, so sixty, ten. Sixty, fifteen. Supplies. Ninety-nine, seventeen. And then you have your division totals. Summary of expenditures. And summary of resources. Is there any questions on any of the budget that was presented? Okay, hearing none, then. I need a motion to exit the committee of the whole.
Madam Mayor, I move to exit the committee of the whole.
I need a second.
Second by Councilman Johnson.
Councilman Rousa- made the motion, and Councilman Vlach seconded. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda is audience comments. And seeing no one in the audience, so we are on to, Madam Clerk, your comment.
Nothing other than, I just would like to thank the council. I do recognize that we have a new body. Before we begin, what I call really get into the budget season, as part of that process, our finance director will get up. He does a really nice presentation overall, and so he'll be able to answer some of maybe things that aren't as clear. He'll go through the different funds and how things are handled. So, if you want to revisit my budget, certainly, through the whole entire budget process until the budget is adopted, we can revisit my budget tonight. It's usually just an opportunity to kind of get the council thinking about what we have in our budgets, how I budget it. If there's any questions, we found that it saves time later. It's not to say that we can't revisit it. So, with that being said, we'll just see you all at our next regular meeting on the 22nd.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Harvey?
No comment.
Councilman Vlach?
No comment.
Councilman Brown?
No comment.
Councilmember Johnson?
No comment, thank you.
Councilmember Ross, Rousa?
Rousa, if you'd like, we could re spell my name.
Let me rename you.
That's okay. If we get the sound right, we don't have to spell it properly.
Okay.
Maybe R O W.
R O W, you know.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for your time. This is just the beginning of the budget season, as some of you know. So, we look forward to seeing you at the next council meeting. And with that, if there is no further business at hand, the meeting is adjourned at 6:39.